Sounds good. Okay, so we're called to order at 7:02 PM. First item of business would be seeking a volunteer to take the minutes. Until Janie is able to join us.
Well, I can organize so I can do that. Yeah, I'm listening.
Okay. All right. So we're called to order. We have five trustees present, so we have a quorum currently missing. Matt will be joining us later and Janie, who I presume not having heard from her otherwise, will be joining us later. Tricia's here.
Oh, Tricia's here. Oh, there she is. Okay, so Matt.
Oh, here's Janie.
Will join us.
You're off the hook, Kathy. Here's Janie.
Oh, okay.
Hi.
Good. She does a much better job than I do.
Janie does an amazing job with the minutes.
It's a good way to just sit and listen and not contribute anything.
So we had just called to order, Janie, so you haven't missed much. And all the trustees are here except for Matt, who's going to be joining us later. We also have Martha, Anna, and Jillian from the staff, as well as Eliza, because I thought you were going to be late. And trustees-elect Jenny Graziano and Bonnie Schall.
And what time did we call the order?
7:03.
7:01.
7:03.
7:03.
Yep. You, you take really good minutes, Janie.
I guess I should put my video on, huh? What the heck?
You're sharing your screen.
How did I do that? I'm doing that. I don't know how I'm doing it.
Oh.
This is on.
All right. I don't know what I'm doing. I just pushed a little button and.
Okay, let's see. I think I have the ability to.
Who is that person?
Oh, my.
See, there you go.
Sorry.
I stopped it for you. My admin, my call admin superpowers. Okay.
Right.
So additions to the agenda, do we have any for the meeting tonight? Hearing none. We'll move on to our first item of business, which is an opportunity to address the library board. Are there any members of the public present this evening that would like to address the board? Not hearing any. We will move on then from opportunity to address the board. I would like to thank everybody that is not on the board this evening for taking the time out of the day to be, to be here with us. That was appreciated. Then we're up to the approval of the minutes of the March meeting of the board. And to jump in under financial reports, I'll start sharing over now. Any questions, comments? Anything at all regarding the minutes? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes.
And, okay, motion from Cal, second from John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think I heard a late aye rather than a nay. Maybe that's just my audio trick. Nobody said nay, right?
No, nobody said nay. It was a late aye.
Okay. Good. The miracles of Zoom.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and that takes us over to our financial reports. So, jumping in on the information here. First item to draw attention to is the property tax right at the top. So as you can see, there isn't anything listed as far as a deposit having been made in March. But I can report that on April 9th, which because it's April, not March, doesn't show up here yet, but will show up next month when we are looking at the reports. Then that we did receive a deposit of $19,536. It does look likely that that will be our last deposit for this fiscal year. And it does leave us with a $5,000 shortfall in terms of what we had expected. That is par for the course. I got a document that was shared over to me from Bettina that neatly summarized all of the different taxing entities and what they had asked for in terms of property tax. And pretty much everybody had about the same percentage shortfall across the village. So not just us. Seems to have been a Lake Bluff-wide issue with this shortfall. With the other revenue that we did get, the Naperville fees that we received last month, that does pretty much defray that as an unexpected revenue source that we had not budgeted to be receiving. Would have preferred that we had balanced out a little closer, but all things considered, could have been a much bigger variance. So not ideal, but not, could have been worse. We do have one significant revenue. I'm confusing myself with my windows. One significant revenue source that we still have to receive, and that is the contribution from the village. So that'll be around about $8,550. It is a a formula that is adjusted each year, so it's always a little bit more than the previous year. So it'll probably be a touch more than the 8,550. And that we receive as part of the reconciling and audit process at the end of the year. So that hasn't been added in yet, but it, it will be added in after the end of April.
Eric, is there any way you can enlarge the documents?
Oh, yes. Is that better? Is it getting bigger on your screen?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's good.
Okay. No, the default on these things is invariably tiny, 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 tiny. Okay. So those are some items in revenue and then scrolling down to page four. There we go. You can see here that, I can manage to highlight it. There we go. That we have an expense this month of $36,238 for computer equipment. That represents the servers whose purchase was authorized at the last meeting. So.
I gassed a little bit when I signed that check.
Yeah. It's a big piece of hardware.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are included and as, you know, the, the big capital expense, expense that we were waiting on, do keep in mind that that's already been included in the expenses here when we look at our next stop, which is the bottom line. Okay. So we can look over and for year-to-date balance, this third column in, we can see that we've got If we add in the 8,550 that we know we're owed from the village, that takes our total revenue up that we know for certain that we'll have to 1,012,307. That will have that at minimum by the, for the end of the fiscal year. While that does budget out to 18,334 less than we had budgeted for to receive as far as revenue. You know, all things considered, not too bad. Most of that 18,000 is taken up actually with the miscellaneous revenue sources that we didn't receive. So you know, most of the year, we weren't receiving fines. We haven't had our passport service up and going, you know, all year long. So those are significant revenue sources that just were awash this year. And that's the lion's share of that number. You can also see that our expenses thus far are at 905,000. So that is going to put us at factoring in that 8,550 again, a difference between those two numbers of 106,996. So with a month left, that is a good place to be for a comfortable landing at the end of the fiscal year. So we should definitely be able to put a comfortable amount of funds as we had hoped and planned, adding to that reserve and be able to continue building that up, which is great. We don't want to fall behind on the schedule that we had set for ourselves to build that number back up for the next anticipated major capital expense.
Eric, Eric, what you had the extra 19,000 as well from the, from the taxes? Will that go into that number then as well?
Yes, you're right. I'm forgetting that for some reason. Yes, that will be added in as well. I added it. I did the math adding it in and then I completely forgot to add it in down below.
Okay.
Too many numbers. Yes. So that would actually take it up to. Thank you for catching me on that. That would take us up to 125,000. Difference between revenue and expense. John?
Is there, is there some kind of, maybe it's an unwritten guideline about not building up, not being, I imagine this is not a problem we wouldn't mind having, but having too, too great a reserve?
There isn't a hard and fast legal rule about it. The guardrails as established by the library board are that the, the total should never go above 75% of operating, annual operating expenses. Nor should it go below 25% of annual operating expenses. Right now, we're trying to remember the exact number. We're in the 30s.
The work.
Percent wise.
We're far away.
So we're far away from that.
Okay, right. That's all.
No, it's, it's, it's worth keeping in mind. We have had, you know, other village entities, the, the school, of course, most recently, that have gotten in trouble with having really big reserves.
Right, right.
I want to say the, the school had well in excess of 100% of their operating budget at one point in, in reserve and you know, people rightly have questions when they, when they see that a public entity has that kind of a reserve, but we're not close to that yet.
Okay, thanks.
But Eric, back when I came on the board, we had the opposite problem. We had been told by the village to spend down our reserves and we did. And then, and then we had a big roof problem. We had no reserves and we had to put on a new roof. And from that time on, we started paying attention, a lot more attention to our reserves than we did to what the village was telling us.
Yeah. I vividly remember that because that was my first, first winter at the, at the library was the 2005, 2006 with the HVAC failed in February and the roof was leaking, so we were moving buckets around every morning to catch the, catch the water when it was falling from different places.
And then the library went before the village with a truth in taxation thing so that we could, we raised the percentage of what we were asking for in, in tax revenues. But it was, you know, it was kind of a nail biter because we didn't have any money and we didn't have a roof. Didn't have an HVAC system either.
Yeah, and that was, that was quite a thing. I mean, the, the, the board, the village board was in the position that they would have to vote down their own levy in order to not do the levy request from the, from the library. And I, I think it was still something like a five to four vote. So small town politics. Okay. So any questions on the finances?
Yeah, so Eric, what do you anticipate moving into reserve? What, with all these numbers coming in, dollars coming in and going, where do you think we are?
I'm a little hesitant to speculate. Fingers crossed, I'd like to see 40,000 move in there. Moving over. We do have a few odds and ends that we need to tie up. Specifically, we've got to do some work in the, the back lot there. It looks like that'll probably need to happen this fiscal year. Getting some trees down and some electrical moved ahead of the parking lot project so that we're ready to go at the start of the next fiscal year. Don't want to, don't want them to be on our block and then, you know, not have the lot ready for them.
Okay, well, what's the next month that we feel?
Next month, I will have some pretty firm numbers for you. Any other finance questions? Not hearing any. I will look for a motion to accept the finance reports.
I move that we accept the finance reports.
And second?
Second.
Okay.
Who is that?
That was Tricia. Okay, so we will do a roll call vote because it is finances. Trustee Brockett.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Heinselmann. And trustee George.
Aye.
All right, carries unanimously. And that takes us on to the checks. We'll get to as soon as I have scrolled down far enough. Okay. So first item that I have marked down to draw attention to for the Board of Trustees is on the first page here, which is the check for Zubin, which is for BeanStack. BeanStack was a software that we acquired last spring in order to take our, our summer reading clubs online. That's what it's designed for. That's its specialty. And it did very well with that. What we're looking at for the, the summer ahead is really not so much a program that returns us to normal for our summer reading programs as one that's most likely going to turn out to be kind of a hybrid. That, you know, we're, we're not really sure how much in-person programming indoors we're going to be able to do. Is that really clear what the mitigations are going to be set as, what's going to be advisable? So we're planning conservatively and so that we know that we can do everything digitally. And then trying to build in, you know, outdoor gatherings and the option to do things in person as should we be able to do that. So Zubin, the, the BeanStack program is, you know, is a, is a part of that. We're going to be running that again this year and you know, if we end up with the delightful circumstance where we're all practically back to normal and doing a lot of in-person programs, it'll still be a really cool facet of the, of the program. So that is what that is. And then heading down to my next destination here, I can see again the, the three checks here, the three different components of the server approval with CDI that happened last month. These are the checks for those. So those obviously were the, the big ones. And then I did want to draw attention as well to the Granite Telecommunications bill at 312. That does continue to be a a lot lower. So that seems to be kind of a regular norm that we're slipping into. So Lindy deserves a lot of kudos for that. She worked really hard on getting out there, beating the bushes and getting competitive quotes. And it seems to be really paying off figuratively and literally for the library. So, and then the last item that I wanted to draw attention to was the Village of Lake Bluff invoices. You may notice that there are many of them. So what's happened here was that you may recall, well, I'm sure you recall that, that Marlene Schible, who was the assistant to the, to the village finance director, departed Lake Bluff for a different position towards the end of the summer. And after she departed, the village, and I don't know if it's a short-term or a long-term solution, but right now they've brought in basically a finance, a finance temp who is doing most of the things that Bettina had been doing. So there's been kind of a training period and, and part of that was that for quite a while here, we kept getting the, the expenses that are listed here that the village bills us for because the village takes in those bills from, say, the life insurance, the you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield, the dental insurance provider, et cetera, et cetera, takes in those bills, pays them for everybody and then sends out bills to the different component units that we pay back to the village for our portion of things. So they kept getting invoiced, so they were kept getting added to our financial reports. So there's no big surprise there to, to be added because things have been getting added in, but they weren't sending us bills. It doesn't seem to be something that was relayed or that got dropped through the cracks. I'm not really sure what happened. But I, I do know that Lawrence and I sat down and made a point of reaching out and getting that corrected here this last month before we got to the end of the fiscal year. So we were keen to get us back on track, which we now very much are. So that kind of transition and hiccup there is why we ended up with so many bills. And I also wanted to make certain that while there's a large number that's attached to the bottom that we're, that I'm, I'm clear as well that this isn't something where that whole number is then translating into being just dumped into billing for the month. It is not.
So you've gone back and double-checked all of these entries, vision insurance and dental insurance and month by month by month?
I've made sure that we were being charged for them. But I can go back and I can, I can check and make sure that the numbers all match too.
Well, I just want to make sure. It's a, it's a whole lot of stuff for someone to filter through or easily.
It is.
Way.
You know, it's probably not a bad idea, given that we're working with somebody new.
And will someone, when they just.
Yeah.
Will someone go through this with a fine to come?
Yes. Yeah, that's part of what they do in the, in the audit there and any discrepancies as far as invoices and amount paid versus, you know, what shows up in the paperwork would that pops up with these computerized systems very quickly. So they would find that. Okay. Those were the items that I had to draw attention to. Are there any other questions?
No.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions, I would look for a motion to approve.
We have to state the, is this where we state?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yes.
It's 14, 705 to 14, 712. And then 14, 714 to 14, 732.
Okay, so, so I move that we approve the checks. Keeping those numbers in mind.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion from Cal, second from Bill. And we'll do the roll call vote again. Trustee Brockett.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee George.
Aye.
Trustee Heinselmann.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
All right, carries unanimously. And we are on then to our committee reports. And we have three committees that met. We had a joint meeting of the Finance and HR Committee, and then we also had a Technology Committee meeting. So, um, let's see, for, for the HR Committee, for the joint meeting there, who would like to provide a report on that?
I would be happy to. All right, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, so Kathy and I met with Eric along with the help from Bill and Matt representing the Finance Committee. And we completed a fiscal year performance evaluation for Eric based on the template and goals that were created from last year, which was crafted from a prior board member and obviously before knowledge of the impact of the pandemic. So we had to be pretty flexible. We incorporated responses from the survey and thank you everyone again for participating. We assessed goal performance and confirmed and approved salary amount allotted with approval from the financial budget. And that will be presented to Eric next week. Although I will no longer be on the HR Committee and it has been a pleasure working with everyone, I will be suggesting revisions for next year's evaluation template to include input from each committee on their priorities and sponsorship of goal formation. I will also be recommending that statistical analysis along with staff feedback be a portion of the new performance evaluation. And finally, I'll aim to align the Lake Bluff Library Mission and Vision Statements as a standard guide for, as a potential source of incentive, incentive structure for Eric. So if anyone has any questions or feedback, please let me know. Otherwise, great job to Eric and thanks everyone for your participation in the process.
Thank you for yours.
Yes, thank you.
You've done a great job with this, Tricia.
Yeah, that was a, that was a great form and a great format to, to get feedback back to you, Trish. So yeah, well done.
I'm, I'm happy that it worked out well for everybody and thank you again for, for having me on the board. I really enjoyed this time.
Especially we all will miss you terribly. We've been, in a very short time, you've been enormously helpful to us. So we know that we're going to see you again soon. Probably doing all sorts of wonderful things in the village. So we appreciate your service.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so that's update on the HR Finance Joint Committee. Bill, is there anything that you would add as Finance Chair?
No, we, we reviewed, you know, the, the budget for next year and, and looked at, I'm seeing there, but no, I think Trish did a great job with putting that and guiding us through, through that. I, I can talk through the technology group meeting if, if you want to do that one next.
Sounds good. Since that would be, yeah, since Matt's not able to join us yet.
So we, we, we had our first meeting as a, as a group. Matt will be the chair of, of this committee moving forward. Our main goals really were to establish some, some guidelines and some areas that we were going to, to look at as, as a group. And in, in summary, the, the first one was to look at tech tutorials on e-materials to look at what we can do to make things easier for people on e-materials and, and guide them through the different formats, whether it's iPad, Android and things like that. formats, whether it's iPad, Android and things like that. So we're going to be looking at how we can do that. We also talked about looking at what would be best practices. And using CVI, who put in the servers as a someone to to talk with since they do a lot of the service for a lot of the libraries in the in the area. And and they will kind of help guide us as to what we want to be looking at as far as best practices as we move forward. And we also discussed a little bit how to improve on the the Wi-Fi in the library as well as looking at making the the VPN more robust to allow staff to log in from home. And so those were, those are probably the four areas that we looked at. And Matt's also putting together a survey in order to benchmark with with other libraries as well as far as what they're doing on their tech technology so that we can again, look at that from a benchmarking process. Anything else, Eric, that you can think of that that came up?
I would only add that since the since the committee met that I've followed up with with a few staff members about assisting with the the committee's work and providing their own perspectives on the use of technology within different aspects of what the the library does. So whether youth services or technical services, you know, different different perspectives, different ways of using technology for different things. So by and large, everybody, I think, seems pretty excited. You know, technology is an important part of where libraries are headed in the future. And certainly, in particular, it is for us as a small library since you know, we're we're never going to, no matter how much we might aspire to be an enormous, a library with an enormous building. It's it's not in the stars for us, but you know, using technology wisely, a lot of the challenges of being a smaller library can be overcome. So it's very exciting. I'm really thrilled to see this committee up and going again. And I am really looking forward to continuing to work with Matt and Bill. I thought we had a fantastic first meeting.
Yeah, there's a lot of good ideas and and thought processes of what to look at.
Okay. And then we have the other committees which did not meet. For those, are there, is there anything that anyone would like to add? Any of the the chairs there? Okay. I did wanted to add in very quickly, a quick blurb as it relates to the some information as it relates to the committees moving forward. So the committees as they currently stand, the membership for those is set at the start of each fiscal year. So we'll be starting with a clean slate on the committee membership at the next meeting in May. That's the annual meeting of the Board, new trustees who have been elected to take the oath and are seated. Officers for the year ahead are selected, are voted on. And committees are also set. So you know, all of that being the case, you know, I would definitely encourage everyone to take some time and think about where you might be interested in in being committee wise for the for the year ahead. What committees would you like to be on? And we will be setting those right at the start of the the next meeting, getting ourselves organized. And then moving forward. So if you have any questions as far as how that will all work, getting all of that set committees, officers, new trustees, et cetera, please feel free to reach out, ask me any questions you might have.
So I have a quick comment. Janie and I never got to work together on the Outreach Committee, but if you're open to it, I'll send you a couple of the ideas that I had in in the event that you remain on that committee for the next year.
That would be great. Yeah, I would like that very much. Thank you.
Cool. Thanks.
Thank you, Tricia. Okay. Um. So that takes us up to our item of new business, of which we have just the one which is a resolution of thanks to Carol Stroh.
Eric, can I step in here for a second, please?
Absolutely.
First of all, I I wanted to kind of catch us up on a lot of you know, what's going on in the board. First, I want to congratulate Bill for his reelection. You're a valuable member of the Board and we're very happy that you're going to continue. I want to congratulate Matt, Bonnie and Jenny for their elections. We look forward to you getting to know us and working with us and hopefully seeing you in person someday. And we certainly would, we're sad, but we're very, send good wishes to Tricia. She stepped up at a time when we needed a board member and she was not at all shy about lending her experience and her great ideas and a lot of energy into especially this review process. So we're very grateful to you, Tricia, and we hope to see you around around at the library and we hope to be working with you. So good luck to you. Thank you. As I kind of got in a little bit late tonight and Cal was saying she will be at our main meeting. It's very bittersweet to see Cal leave the Board. For those of you on the Board and staff who don't know her very well, I'd like to just share a little bit of her background. It seems like she's lived in Lake Bluff forever, but she really began her journey in Michigan. She was raised there. She went to the University of San or Santa Heights College and did graduate work at the University of Michigan. When she was ready to start her teaching career, she rather than go to someplace in the clear by, she decided to start working in Puerto Rico. And after that, she moved to Guam. So she's always been that, you know, self-assured, independent woman that we've all gotten to know. And she was in Guam. She was fortunate. She met a wonderful, attractive Navy man, Al. And they began their life together. And it's fortunate for all of us that the Navy brought Al to Great Lakes Naval Base because that allowed them to sell to settle in Lake Bluff in nineteen seventies. Cal and Al raised four children in Lake Bluff. And all four of them served in the military, the Navy and the Air Force. By my calculations, her husband and children provided more than a hundred years of service to the United States. I think that's exceptional. And as the matriarch of this family, we thank you, Cal, and your family for your service. And I also know that some of your grandchildren are in service right now. As Cal raised her family, she also was a dedicated member of the churches of Saint Mary's in Lake Forest. There she served as a member of the Parish Advisory Council as a lectern. And she has served as the liaison between Saint Mary's and the Lake County Catholic Charities Board. Father Mike Ignatius of Saint Mary's Church describes Cal as a delightful soul, an avid reader, a quick wit and a warm heart. She has a better blessing to the parish community, and he considers a distinguished member of the Lake Bluff community. Cal has served on the Library Board for sixteen years, four full terms, longer than any other board member. She's a mentor, a leader, a wordsmith, and has extraordinary attention to detail, sometimes to the chagrin of other board members. By my calculations, again, she has attended one hundred and ninety-two monthly board meetings and at least three hundred and eighty-four committee meetings. You most likely saw her at every Phyllis Fox writing celebration, most Fourth of July parades, holiday celebrations and many, many library programs, and always with a smile, a good word, and representing the best of our library. Cal will be missed, but I'm sure that we all join you, all join me in wishing her support and love as she moves on from the library to whatever else, who knows? She's turning ninety. She's got a long way to go. No surprises from Cal. So anyway, thank you, Cal. We'll see you next month. But thank you for all you've done for the library.
You're here.
Yeah.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy, very much for that resume. I'd forgotten some of those things.
We had a few spies do some research for me and they were enthusiastic and helping me.
Yes.
So Eric, you want to go out and be then to the evening?
I will indeed. So I will read in for the for the record, the resolution that we have before us. Our first resolution of the current calendar year, twenty twenty-one. It reads, whereas Carol Stroh was elected to the Board of Library Trustees in May two thousand and five and was elected to subsequent four-year terms in two thousand and nine, two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and seventeen. And whereas Ms. Stroh is the longest-serving trustee in the history of the Lake Bluff Public Library. And I can guarantee the veracity of that one. Jillian did quite a lot of math to confirm that that was true. And whereas Ms. Stroh brought an attention to punctuation, grammar and monthly expenditures that contributed positively to accountability and effective communication by the library. And whereas Ms. Stroh in her time on the Board helped oversee a transformation of the library from a cash-strapped organization with a leaking roof, no HVAC and no cash reserves into a fiscally sound organization with the resources to plan for both maintenance and growth. And whereas Ms. Stroh has held leadership positions on the Board, including Treasurer and Vice President, as well as Chairperson of various committees. Probably have forgotten that you were Treasurer at one point, Cal.
Um, yeah, I, when I read that, I thought, oh, yeah, I was.
You were?
I was.
And whereas Ms. Stroh has contributed determination, a solution-oriented attitude and a zest of sense of humor to board meetings and undertakings. And whereas Ms. Stroh has discharged her responsibilities faithfully and in the spirit of service to the community. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Library Trustees as follows. The Board of Trustees hereby recognizes and thanks Carol Stroh for sixteen years of service to the Village of Lake Bluff as a Library Trustee.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Well served.
And to Martha. Thank you, Martha, for that beautiful letter. I did, I did answer it. I'm gonna miss being on the Board, but as I understand it, I will still be on the Foundation Board. Is that right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's correct.
So I feel like I haven't completely cut ties with the library. And as Martha said in her letter, she said, I know I'll see you around the library. And yes, indeed, you will see me around the library. You know, it's it's standard to say that it's been a pleasure to serve as a trustee. But it's been something more than a pleasure. For me, it's been a way to pay back to the community for all that the community did for my family. My kids were mostly raised here. At the time that we moved here, my, the eldest was a sophomore in high school and the youngest was in kindergarten. So, you know, by and large, the kids were really raised in this town. And it's a great place to raise kids. The town has been good to me. And being on the Library Board was one way that I could pay back to the community. So I'm grateful for that.
Well, we're grateful for your service and thoroughly have enjoyed working with you all these years. We've learned so much. So thank you for all you've done. Eric, do we need yays and nays on this? I'm seeing this on the
We do. It is a an official Board Resolution. So I would look for a motion to approve.
Do I get to vote?
Yeah.
I will so move. I will. I will so move that this resolution is adopted.
Motion from Janie and second from John. All in favor?
Hi.
And we know there's nobody opposed. I won't even bother asking on that.
Who would dare?
Okay, motion carries. And not pictured this evening, we do have a certificate of recognition as as well that will be passing along to you. And we have gathered together some donations to get you a parting gift from the staff and Board, which will be a lovely clock.
Well, thank you.
Since you have always, among many other things, brought a keen awareness of how late it sometimes got at meetings.
The first time I met Cal. Cal, I should go through and count in my minutes how many times you were the one who moved.
Yes, I was always trying to move the meeting along. And I thought one way I could move the meeting along is to just move right away.
The first time I met Cal, we were at a meeting and that there was another meeting scheduled. I was kind of overwhelmed by the meetings. And she told me when it was in military time. I had to sit back and figure that one out. So glad to see now these electronic notices come through.
Okay.
It's been a good sixteen years and I I thank you all. It's very nice, the proclamation and your kind words, Kathy, and Martha's letter. It's been very you know, it's brightened my time. And this is a good during this pandemic, it's a good time to have your days brightened. So thank you.
Thank you, Cal.
Thank you.
Okay. And then that would take us up to the old business, which really the only item there is the update on the Director's Evaluation, which will be, as Tricia noted, delivered at a meeting next Tuesday. I don't think there's anything else to to be added at this time in terms of reporting there. Kathy, Tricia, is there anything that you would add? I think we've pretty much covered her during the HR Committee Report.
Unless Tricia has anything.
No.
Okay. On that note, then, we will continue on to the Director's Report. So
There's nothing under Capital Project Update?
Nothing new for the Capital Project. We're continuing to get to get organized. I've melt, I've melt, met a number of times over the past month with with John and with Kathy Seibert. And we're getting things organized and going again, brushing off the the rust, getting ourselves familiar with programs for fundraising like Little Green Light. And positioning ourselves for what, fingers crossed, should be a successful campaign this summer and fall. So that's, that's where we at, where we are at. And I anticipate there'll be some foundation meetings for for strategy that will be in our near future. Which, as Cal noted, you get to still be a part of that.
Yes.
So and the Foundation is delighted to finally have our first member who is not a member of the also a member of the Board or the staff. So we got there.
Well, it sounds to me like I'm I'm just a breakthrough all the way through.
You're a groundbreaker, Cal.
Wait, I took my family.
Well, it won't be, I'm certain that it won't be any news to them. Okay. And then on the the Director's Report, one item that I wanted to draw particular attention to was that LibCal Calendar. I didn't include the link in the packet here because it's posted publicly on the website in the calendar as it's been created really is intended to be a it's for board use. So it includes, you know, things like the the Meetings of the Friends, the Meeting of the Foundation, as well as you know, other meetings that are permitted to happen, you know, without being posted by the Open Meetings Act. So it, because it includes more there, it's for board use. It's a very useful tool, but I didn't figure it would be a great idea to, you know, necessarily put that out there. If you need you know, necessarily put that out there. If you need me to send the link again, please let me know. Happy to resend it. Um, I am committed to keeping that updated as a resource for the board. I think it's a, a tool whose time is overdue and, uh, one that's going to be very helpful to us going forward.
Eric, there's, that's, that's for board stuff, right? That's not for the foundation stuff?
It is for board stuff, though board-related, um, meetings such as the, the foundation meetings, as well as, uh, the meetings of the friends, uh, are included there for reference purposes.
Okay, but, but when the foundation meets, you will still send out individual email.
Yeah, no. Um, the, 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 the calendar is, is going to be, it's there to record what's been decided.
Okay.
It's, it's not going to replace the emails.
Good.
Eric, is there any way, I'm gonna ask you, if this is possible, we can enhance the calendar with some kind of a color coding and a key where, for example, of, see, because right now you're just looking at a calendar of, of dates. And if there's like a little green dot on Saturdays, you know, that's friends or something that would help us identify more quickly what we're looking for.
I think I've got what you're looking for here. Let me.
You have to do it now. I'm just, as a little mini project in your spare time.
Here we go. Stop share there and share over to. Okay, so
No, no.
We've got different views here with it, with the calendar. And, uh, we've got the, uh, the monthly view. It does give them different colors, um, depending on the type of meeting. So there's the, kind of purplish there for the regular board meetings and the kind of pinkish for the foundation. But, you know, loo- looking at it, I definitely recognize that it's subtle.
Okay, I didn't even.
It's not exactly, it's not exactly filling it in.
See, I didn't, mine didn't look like this at all. I'm gonna have to go back and work with it more. That, this is more of what I had in mind. It's rather than just looking at a blank calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, because all I saw, all I saw was that calendar on the left. And then you, I would go searching for, you know, uh, B and G meeting and I had to go every single day to find it, but I'll have to play with it and get this, this area on the right working for me.
Okay. This is the view it should come up with and then you can
Okay, great.
adjust it. If, if you aren't able to get to, to the, um, the different views to work, let me know. Um, I, I know you're an Apple user, so I suppose it's possible that there might be a system difference there.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna look into it. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Just so you know, Eric, I'm gonna rely on your emails. I'm not futzing around with this calendar.
That is fine.
Yeah, let's spoken.
I plead my age.
Okay. And then the one last item that I wanted to share. It's not that one, this one. Um, was to highlight an item, um, in our statistics report, which was prepared for us by Anna Fifehouse. And if we take a look at, uh, some of the numbers that are included in our regular reports here, uh, under digital collections. You know, one aspect that we always keep an eye on, uh, of course, for, uh, usage of digital collections is just the number of checkouts. And not all databases have checkouts, um, you know, for like the EBSCO host, where it's primarily articles that are being made available. And a lot of the other databases, it's, it's more about, um, numbers of searches and, and things like that as the measurables. But we have, uh, five databases that are really measured by checkouts. Those are Overdrive, Hoopla, Access 360, Canopy and Flipster. And as you can see, um, looking at the numbers in, in terms of the checkouts over the past year, Overdrive still very much continues to be our most popular, followed by, uh, Hoopster, uh, Hoopster, Hoopla, and Canopy. And Overdrive and Hoopla are both primarily focused on ebooks and the audiobooks. And Canopy is, uh, offer some of those as well, but offers a lot of videos. It's kind of, it's big, um, big hook as to what they make available. So, a bit of information as far as the distribution of where those checkouts fall, um, you know, the databases that are, are seeing most usage. And, um, you know, figured that, uh, you know, at, at this meeting and then going forward, that I will try and continue to draw attention to, um, a slice of the statistics report now that we have these amazing stats reports, um, here and available. And at times I would also, uh, as she settles into her position, like to, uh, have Anna make a, a presentation or two on the numbers as well. So, and as always, if you have any questions, uh, on the statistics, let me, let me know. As a rule of thumb, uh, librarians love their numbers. We love to measure things, organize things. So I was happy to talk about the statistics.
Eric, if you wouldn't mind, this does actually bring up something I was just discussing with Martha, which was the possibility of doing some quarterly in-depth specific statistics reports. So just for the board to keep in mind, uh, I know Matt has mentioned Google Analytics as a point of interest. We always have our programming statistics more in depth in June. But if anyone has something in specific, they'd like me to take a look and prepare a report for, please send that my way.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, on, on that note, we actually talked a little about statistics when Tricia and I were visiting over the review, um, meeting. And over the years that I've been on the board, we've had several displays of statistics, which I know are very labor-intensive to put together and take a lot of work and the people who prepare them, I'm sure put a lot of themselves into it. But I don't know that we've really put them to good use. So having, you know, free or a regular basis of recording and getting feedback and getting familiar so that we, the, the board can view the statistics and get the information that you're recommending. I think it's very useful for our time and for the use of the librarians. And, you know, and as time goes on, you can figure out what reports are really valuable. Maybe some are, are less so and put less time or something new may about. But I think it's great that we're doing this and that we're developing an in-house expert and sharing with us. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so that's everything that I've got listed for the, for the meeting for tonight. Is there anything that anyone would like to add? Otherwise I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Move.
I so move.
Very fitting.
I'll let Cal have the honors.
Cal moves that we adjourn. John seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, meeting is adjourned at eight oh one PM.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.